Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The June 21st, 2022 Legislative Session of the Anorundel County Council is called to order. Please silence all electronic devices at this time. Please pause for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Ms. Hare tonight.
Let us be thankful for this day that has been given to us, for its blessings, its opportunities, its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have a special presentation, which will be led by Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just signaled to my legislative aide that I don't have my reading glasses. So, we're gonna, we're gonna move ahead anyways. See how long my arms can grow. So, good evening, everybody. Today, we're gonna take the first few minutes of our meeting to say thank you and, that's better, talk about some special people in the room. Last month, five members of the Anorundel County Police Department traveled to New Jersey to join officers from around the world to ride in the annual Police Unity Tour. This bicycle ride was started in 1997 and spans a four-day period as they bike from New Jersey to Washington DC to raise awareness for those who have died in the line of duty. The nearly 300-mile journey ends at the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Wall, and this year, our Anorundel County Police Department team members not only participated, but raised more than $20,000 collectively. We have prepared citations to recognize both the members of the 2022 team, as well as those who have ridden for Anorundel County in previous years. It's, it's also somewhat poignant today, many of the folks that join us today were also spent their bulk of the day on the eastern shore, laying to rest by Comico County's Deputy Sheriff Glenn Hilliard. So, it's just sort of happenstance that we're here today, but it is a reminder to all of us of the very serious job our law enforcement officers do, and some pay the ultimate price for our safety. So, at this time, can we bring up the members? First, we're gonna bring up the members of the 2022 team, and I'm gonna join you down front. So, can I have Corporal Gina Chen, who is team captain, Corporal Charles Dalton, logistical support, Corporal Stephen Johnson, PFC John Thomas III, and Chief Amal Awad. So, I'm gonna read one citation and then present them, so we're not here all night. But this citation is presented to Corporal Gina Chen in recognition, "The Anorundel County Council congratulates you on your completion of the 2022 Police Unity Tour. The county council honors your commitment in service and acknowledged the more than $20,000 raised for the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Wall." So, thank you.
Thank you.
Corporal Charles Dalton.
Thank you.
Not a professional. I think this is the first year on Chief Road with the team. Is that us? I'm gonna invite the other folks up. I wanna get everybody's name right. I practiced. Corporal Melissa Edubigan?
Yes, ma'am.
This is for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sort of says the same thing.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Corporal Eric Hamahen.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Corporal Megan Ott. You're welcome. Corporal Kevin Hill. Is Kevin here? Retired Corporal Alex Schwartz.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sergeant Lori Daughters. And Captain Elizabeth Smith.
Thank you.
Get this. Get the picture.
We'll get a group picture in one second. And two, Corporal Dominic Scally and Lieutenant Cam Cook could not be here today, but you have their side. Can I give you this one?
They're very brave.
Yeah, we wanna get everybody in. They're signed by the whole council.
Everybody, everybody.
Be a shy.
Get my skinny side.
And one more, one more. Hold on. Everybody squeeze the tight. Squeeze the tight. Today is actually National Selfie Day, for those who didn't have that. You gotta do a self. It's only appropriate. It's only appropriate.
Look at that.
I got it.
Thank you again. Really.
At this time, we will continue our agenda. Madam Secretary, please read the Ethics Statement.
The Ethics, the Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form, review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
Thank you. We will now open our invitation to audience. Madam Secretary, do we have any comments or communications on subjects not included in the printed agenda received from members of the public?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up at this time to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. If you are speaking, if you wish to speak about an item that is on our agenda this evening, we ask that you wait for that portion of the meeting. And I believe I see one person coming towards our table.
Yeah, let's get you, let's get you so we can all hear you. Welcome. Two minutes in, you may proceed.
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Last fall, starting in September, I started this epic operation to try to explain to you, the members of the council, that I had some problems with zoning enforcement and the way the litigation went, and that I was asking for you to help me and everybody else, see if there aren't some legislative things that we can do to make this better. So, piece by piece, document by document, we proceeded forward, and of course, the first biggie you heard about way before I went to court, which was, well, you knew I didn't get notice of the trial. So, therefore, I was in big trouble. I lose, sort of. But, you know, and this spans from 2017 through, I don't know how long, years. So, I brought you all this, this copy of the notice of trial date, because while it was, was sent, it was sent to the P.O. Box Blank. I never got it. It went right back to the, you know, the court, the district court, and it got lost in the proceeding, you know, in the proceedings. Laura, I've got a copy for everybody, I believe. It's something you've seen before, because this, in conjunction with the next, with another piece, resulted in a really unjust outcome. That is, I wasn't there, and the attorney for Anorundel County, that were representing Anorundel County against me, had filed a request for adjudication of my misconduct, and he used Form 23A. And, you know, and that, oh, I sent you an email. So, if you look in that list of some documents, you'll find that, shoot, anyway. Oh, don't tell me that's already two minutes.
Yes, it is.
And I practiced just today.
Ms. Johnson, it's good to see you. Thank you for your time, and we'll be here in a couple weeks.
Okay. But you need, you gotta learn about what happened with, you know, the contempt of court.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, our invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? All right. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved, Councilman Pruski.
Second, Allison Pickard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 6th, 9th, and 14th, 2022.
June 6th, 2022. The meeting was called to order by Chair Rodvian at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Pruski, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers, Anorundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland. June 9th, 2022. The meeting was called to order by Chair Rodvian at 11:00 AM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Rodvian, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers, Anorundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland. June 14th, 2022. The meeting was called to order by Chair Rodvian at 9:00 AM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Fiedler, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The meeting was held in the County Council Chambers, Anorundel Center, Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 6th, 9th, and 14th, 2022?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Fiedler, second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of June 6th, 9th, and 14th, 2022 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6422, An Ordnance Concerning Public Works, Heritage Harbor Condominium Phases 1 through 10 Water and Wastewater Petition Assessment Correction. Bill Number 6522, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Eagle Park Vista and Eagle Park Village, Jessup, Maryland. Bill Number 6622, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Blue Oaks at North Odenton Apartments, Odenton, Maryland. Bill Number 6722, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Villages at Marley Station, Glenberne, Maryland. Bill Number 6822, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, The Village at Little Patuxent, Gambrels, Maryland. Bill Number 6922, An Ordnance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes, Willows at Forest Drive, Annapolis, Maryland. Bill Number 7022, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Security Measures for the Sale of Firearms, Effective Date Contingency.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of any resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 1622, Resolution Appointing an Anorundel County Citizen to Serve on the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Reconstruction Advisory Group. Bill Number 1722, Resolution Adopting the Debt Management Plan for Anorundel County, Maryland. Resolution Number 1822, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorundel County to Allow a Council Member to Serve Up to Three Consecutive Terms of Office. Resolution Number 1922, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorundel County to Require That the Compensation Paid to Each Member of the County Council Be in accordance with Recommendations of the Salary Standard Commission that Are Approved by Ordinance of the County Council. Resolution Number 2022, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorundel County to Change the Term Chairman to Chair. Resolution Number 2122, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorundel County to Remove the Requirement That Copies of Bills and Notices of Public Hearings Be Posted on a Bulletin Board, and to Require That Electronic Copies of Bills and Notice of Any Public Hearings Be Published to the County Council Website, and Printed Copies Be Made Available to the Public and Press. Resolution Number 2222, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorundel County to Clarify the Differences Between the Two Types of Emergency Ordinances Allowed Under the Charter and the Legislative Procedure That Applies to Each. Resolution Number 2322, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorundel County to Allow the County Council to Assign Additional Functions, Duties, and Personnel to the County Auditor that are Related to the Finances and Financial Affairs of the County. Bill Number, I'm sorry, Resolution Number 2422, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anorundel County to Change the Name of the Charter Revision Commission to the Redistricting and Charter Revision Commission, and to amend the date by which a Decennial Redistricting and Charter Revision Commission must be appointed by the County Council.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 51-22 as amended.
Oh.
You may proceed, Ms. Fiedler. My apologies.
We need a motion, though, right?
Yes.
Motion to Take Resolution, I just lost it.
1622.
1622 Out of Order.
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to take Resolution Number 16-22 out of order and in this evening's agenda.
Are you doing, are you proposing to do it first here, or at the end of the first? Okay. Okay, understood. I can call the roll on that motion.
Thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to, the motion to vote on Resolution Number 1622 first this evening has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 16-22.
Resolution Number 1622, Resolution Appointing an Anorundel County Citizen to Serve on the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Reconstruction Advisory Group.
Thank you. Ms. Fiedler, this is your resolution. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the, the personal, or the application for Mr. Bradley speaks for itself when an opening on the BRAG Committee, which is the Bay Bridge Reconstruction Group, they meet quarterly, and they discuss what is taking place construction-wise on the Bay Bridge. They weigh in, they talk about issues for the future and impacts on the community. And when an opening opened up, Mr. Bradley jumped at the opportunity, and anytime anyone jumps at an opportunity to help with the Bay Bridge and they live in District 5, I'm all about that. So, I ask my colleagues to support this resolution this evening.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 16-22.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 1622 is adopted.
All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 51-22 as amended.
Bill Number 5122, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Classified Service, Exempt Service.
And this is an administration bill. Mr. Barron, I see you and your team are headed down to the table. You may have the floor as soon as you are ready.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Could see everyone this evening. Pete Barron with the administration. 5122 is the annual pay bill. As you will recall, we discussed this bill at the last meeting. Council decided to hold it as we were in the middle of the budget process. Proud to report, as you know, that the budget passed six to one. So, I have Mr. Teroux, Ms. Bedowski, Ms. Harold, and Ms. Blair Klausmeyer at the table. Think we went through the details at the last meeting, but if you have any questions, the experts here are happy to provide answers. But to remind the folks, watching this bill, the budget that was passed matches up with this bill, so six of you have already voted for that. Thank you very much.
All right. Are there any additional questions from the council? And just for the public, you, as you may recall, or maybe not, on June 6th, Bill Number 51-22 had some technical fixes, but the public hearing was closed and the vote was held. Therefore, there is no public hearing this evening. One last call for discussion. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 51-22.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5122 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 52-22 as amended.
Bill Number 5222, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service, Positions in the Exempt Service.
All right. Another admin bill. Mr. Barron, you and your team have the floor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Swapping out for Ms. Harold is Ms. Atkinson from Personnel, but the rest of the team sticks with me. 5222 is the annual position control bill. Just like the previous bill, this bill was, matches up with the budget that was passed. Will note that there was amendments at the last meeting, and we're ready for you to pass this bill tonight.
Are there any questions from the council? All right. Seeing no lights, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 52-22 as amended. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. We did not receive anything.
Thank you. If there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table at this time and have a seat. When it is your turn, you may state your name and address for the record, and remarks will be limited to two minutes. All right. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 52-22 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 52-22 as amended.
Bill Number 5222, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Positions in the Classified Service, Positions in the Exempt Service.
And seeing no lights at our last opportunity for discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 52-22 as amended.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 52-22 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 56-22.
Bill Number 5622, An Ordnance Concerning Personal Property Tax Credits, Foreign Trade Zones.
Thank you. Once again, we have an administration bill. Mr. Barron, you may introduce your team, and you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me from Economic Development is Mr. McQuillam. From Finance, Ms. Penley. And from Law, Ms. Blair Klausmeyer. 5622 extends the Foreign Trade Zone Property Tax Credit through June 30th, 2027. As you see in the, in the bill's description, this credit has been extended several times in the past. The original dating back to 1998. It helps businesses that are located in the county within the, within certain zones, compete in the global marketplace by allowing a personal property tax credit against certain taxes and fees on imports and exports. Currently, there is one employer taking advantage of this credit, but any business operating within one of these foreign trade zones may take advantage of the credit. This credit has already benefited the county by encouraging that employer to keep over 9,500 jobs here in the county. Mr. McQuillam from EDC is here if you have any hard questions. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions from the council? Oh, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I had an opportunity to reach out and talk to a couple people at this bill, and I guess what I really want to understand, what I'm struggling with is, my math is, according to the auditor's letter, about a million dollars a year for a tax credit that we're giving to Northrop Grumman. And it's like a 7.3 billion, 7.2 billion dollar corporation. I found on Wall Street Journal, they've got like a 20% gross profit margin. I mean, I'm sitting there looking at these numbers, saying, why are the taxpayers of Anorundel County subsidizing them to the tune of a million dollars? So, what I'm trying to understand in wrapping my head around this, and why we've done this for the last 25 years, and why we're gonna keep doing it, is what is the county getting back? So, to the extent that you all can highlight sort of what the upside is for the county, I get the jobs, I get the 9,500 jobs. I'm not hearing anybody say that these jobs are gonna go somewhere else. I think we're sort of uniquely situated in this county for certain reasons, because of Fort Meade and our proximity to Washington DC and some other federal installations, that these jobs are likely here. But I just want to understand, from the county's point of view, why is this a good deal for us? Why is it a good deal for the taxpayers?
Pete Barron, I'm gonna ask Mr. McQuillam to talk a little bit about that. I would just echo the comments I made in my initial statement.
Yeah, and I also like to be clear, again, Wes McQuillam with Economic Development, this isn't just a Northrop Grumman bill. You know, currently, they're the only one that takes advantage of it. And we've, we've lost a few businesses that were located in foreign trade zones. Under Armour used to be in a foreign trade zone, they've since left to be at TradePoint Atlantic. Belts, I think, was in a foreign trade zone at one point in time, so we've lost a couple of those companies. And I would say frankly, my office hasn't done a good job of marketing not just this tax credit program, but foreign trade zone program, the state's foreign trade zone program as a whole. We haven't done a good job of marketing that to help our existing businesses take advantage of the foreign trade zone. Again, not necessarily this tax credit, but the program as a whole. And we haven't done a good job of marketing that program to companies that are interested in locating here. And that's something that we're gonna focus on over the next few years, is making sure that it's not just a Northrop Grumman program, making sure that other businesses take advantage of this. Yeah, I mean, Mr. Barron spoke about the, the high number of jobs. That's certainly something that, that, you know, we want to continue to use this program for. We want to make sure that the existing companies stay competitive in the marketplace. And we also want to make sure that Anorundel County is competitive when we're attracting businesses like that to, to locate here.
the same question the county executive asked when we presented this bill and after discussing it with the experts in EDC is why we brought forward 5622 today.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. Mr. McWilliams, I have to say, I appreciate the forthcoming information and how you strive to do better, but looking back, 2017, it looks like was the first time this personal property tax was available. And, you know, three years later, you all did a heavy lift in your department with getting grants out the door during a global pandemic. So give yourself a little bit of flexibility and credit there, too. I certainly understand the concern of my colleague. It was one that I had as well. But from my understanding, if this bill does not pass this evening, that closes the door for potential new businesses to utilize this personal property tax credit in the future, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I just wanted to follow up on that, because obviously, too, we look for, you know, businesses that are good partners in the community. And I don't want this to turn into a conversation on one specific business, but I did some research as well, and it's my understanding that from a community perspective and partnering, that they do an awful lot, the value of which far exceeds the personal property tax credit that they get for a variety of nonprofits and charitable organizations in the community as well. Is that consistent? Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I would say, you know, my organization is certainly out in the business community. We're members of a lot of different business organizations, all the chambers. You'd be hard pressed to find a business organization in this community or a chamber in this community that they don't have a presence on. You'd be hard pressed to find, you know, a charitable cause that they're not somehow involved in. So that's an excellent point, and I agree.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually voted on this several years ago when we had the first sunset. And I know this question comes up, of what's the value? And I think what people need to realize, I understand that Fort Meade's located here, but with people virtually working now, you can work pretty much anywhere. And so keeping a company local is important, and there's a reason why we have these foreign trade zones. And I also think there's a lot of opportunity for growth. I do, we want to look at, it's not just one business, but what other businesses could do that. And like what Ms. McQuillam said, is that if this is considered an incubator where, you know, you have this opportunity for other folks, that should be marketed. And if we can continue to do that, I think that this could be more advantageous to not only bring in jobs, but to help our economy. So that's a great point that you brought up, and I hope that the council will support this bill. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the comments so far. I guess the one point that I do want to follow up on is, do we have any indication that this particular personal property tax credit is something that is keeping Northrop Grumman here or is allowing them to expand in this area and continue to grow jobs? Do we know if this is actually the hook that's doing what we think it's doing?
They've expressed that this certainly helps them to be more competitive in the marketplace. These are mostly manufacturing-type operations that we're talking about, and, you know, we've obviously lost a lot of those jobs, you know, going back 10, 20 years, we've lost a lot of manufacturing jobs. It's very hard because of cost of living, because of the labor costs. It's difficult for us to attract and frankly retain manufacturing businesses in the county. So this definitely gives us a tool to help do that.
Ms. Pickard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share a highlight that I got to participate in with Northrop Grumman back in December of 2019, when they donated a retired jetliner to our Anarundel County Public Schools, so that we can create in the county through our CAT Centers Aviation Mechanic Training School, which I think is pretty cool. I mean, it definitely shows not that, just that Northrop Grumman is a great community partner, but what foreign trade zones and other commercial tax credit kind of opportunities there are to attract quality companies to our region. So I'll be supporting this bill tonight. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional lights, we will now open the public hearing on Bill Number 56-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We did receive one submission through the online testimony tool. I went to the entire council. It has been added to the record. It is included in the summary that is posted online.
Thank you. We did not have anyone who signed up to testify here at our meeting, but if there is anyone who wishes to speak, you may come down to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes. Once again, seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 56-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 56-22.
Bill Number 5622, an ordinance concerning personal property tax credits, foreign trade zones.
And any for, oh, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add another angle on AACPS, which is that Northrop Grumman participates heavily in our STEM programs and in teacher mentoring, and they've been doing that since at least 2016 and probably further back. But as an engineer myself and someone who looks for these kinds of opportunities, you know, they're not easy to come by, and I wouldn't want us to take them for granted at all. But I think it's pretty clear, Northrop Grumman has been a great partner, and we would love to make this available for other companies that want to establish themselves in the foreign trade zone.
All right. At this time, seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 56-22.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Radveen.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5622 has been passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 57-22.
Bill Number 5722, an ordinance concerning zoning, nurseries with landscaping and plant sales.
Before we move on, I would like to be added as a cosponsor of this bill.
Noted, Ms. Radveen.
Thank you. And this bill is Ms. Hare and Ms. Fiedler's bill. Whichever of you, I see Ms. Hare's light, you may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I will try and keep this brief. I think the bill is mostly self-explanatory, but at its core, it does two things. It clarifies the definition of landscaping with nurseries, I'm sorry, nurseries with landscaping and plant sales, and it clarifies a conditional use requirement for those nurseries with landscaping and plant sales. We have a number of nurseries in our county that do really great work. A lot of them are owned, you know, a husband and wife or a father-son type of duo. And, you know, especially, I think, during COVID, people really started to become more and more aware of some of these small businesses. And, you know, they've been here for years, decades in some instances, and recently have really struggled to continue their operation because of prohibitions in the code or interpretations of these prohibitions in the code. And at its core, our code is outdated. You know, the way the definition currently reads for nurseries with landscaping and plant sales says that nursery items must be grown on-site or established in the ground. And that's just not how plants are grown these days. In a lot of instances, they are grown in containers, either because they're sourced from a specialty location, they're not native to this area, whatever reason it might be. And so they really need to be grown in containers. And so nurseries are now struggling because they're being told they can't grow plants in containers. At the same time, you know, the title of the section, nurseries with landscaping and plant sales, landscaping sales, so to speak, seems obvious that it would be part of the principal use of a nursery. Now, we have a section on landscaping services that are in accessory use, but that's separate from sort of the direct sale to consumer of things like, you know, plant food or mulch or some decorative stone that you might sell to someone who comes in and purchases some of these plants that were grown. And so we've really kind of clarified here that in the conditional use, the storage and the display areas for materials and products that would be going straight to the consumer, like this mulch or plant feed or anything like that, is part of the principal use and not an accessory use. And that's entirely separate from landscaping services that require trucks and all of that other stuff. That still remains an accessory use. We have made sure that there's an upper limit on the storage portion of it, so that, you know, these nurseries, which are really beautiful places, and I find them to be quite peaceful, don't turn into kind of contractor yards or things like that. But really, that's what this bill does. I will have an amendment coming later this evening, a grandfathering provision on the acreage limitations, just to make sure I pick up a piece of a grandfathering provision that was in place years ago. But so with that, I would ask for your all's support on this. We have a number of nurseries that really are struggling to operate right now under the outdated code provisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barron, if the administration would like to respond, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joining me at the table is our Deputy CAO for Land Use, Ms. Lori Rhodes. Ms. Lynn Miller from Office of Planning and Zoning, and Ms. Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. The administration is supportive of this bill. I want to be clear, our position is favorable with amendments. We think this is a good bill. We concur with the sponsors of the legislation that we need to simplify our code as it relates to these businesses. Our code is outdated and has caused some problems. I think our folks in planning and zoning would be the first to admit that they're a bit handcuffed by some of the outdated provisions of the code. The administration will have two amendments that we hope are viewed as friendly to expand and tackle some additional problems with our code. But I want to be clear, we support this bill. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Rhodes to make a few comments, because while our county executive is a farmer, and I did attempt to plant corn this year in my garden, it's not going so hot. So I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Rhodes.
Good evening. My name is Lori Rhodes. I'm the Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. I agree with you, Councilwoman Hare, that our code needs updating. This business has evolved, and I'm a landscaper myself, so I know firsthand how you need all of those materials and supplies when you go to the business. Our amendment that we have introduced is going to kind of make enforcement of this use easier, because the inspectors struggle with distinguishing the retail from the mulch piles, from all of those different things. And so the amendments are here to essentially make it easier for the inspectors to enforce. I also want to state that there was some confusion about principal use versus accessory. It's clear that the principal use will be nurseries with accessory landscaping and plant sales as amended. There are other uses in our code that are coupled with accessory uses that are listed in the code. And so it's not an anomaly. It's something that, again, will help the enforcement staff to understand that these uses will be combined when they enforce, to know that the retail on all the accessory operations will equal to the percentage that we've recommended. And the ultimate goal is to ensure that these businesses continue to flourish.
All right. Are there any questions from the council at this time, or I guess comment? Ms. Hare.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So I'll touch a little bit more on the amendments when we get there, and I understand the intent of them. This bill intends for landscaping sales, the mulch, the things that are incidental to growing plants, planting plants, that it is part of the principal use, not an accessory use. So the way this bill was drafted, it was intended that those items be principal use and that accessory uses, which are dealt with separately, the retail, the landscaping services, those stay accessory. But nothing in this bill was meant to be accessory. The title of the bill is not, the title of the section is not nurseries with accessory landscaping and plant sales, it's just nurseries with landscaping and plant sales. So the clarification that I am intending to make in this bill, and I won't speak for Councilwoman Fiedler, but I believe the clarification that she's intending to make is that the plants grown in the containers and any of the incidental materials, the mulch, the fertilizer, the products used, are principal use. And we have just set an upper limit on the acreage of the storage for that principal use. And so we can touch more on it when we get to the amendment, but I want to make very clear that the intent is that this is principal use, not accessory.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I would just add to that, this was first a very complicated bill to work on. I think we started over a year ago. And it's really a matter of understanding the industry and how it's changed over the years, but also recognizing that a lot of the businesses that we're talking about are existing businesses within close proximity or in existing communities. So we really tried to strike a balance of giving the principal use the most flexibility without opening up a door to the, increasing the accessory use, which would then, in the circumstance of the businesses we've worked with, they want to be good neighbors. They don't want to open up the door to any unintended consequences. So that's how we came to the draft as introduced. Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Oh, let me, Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I've struggled a lot with understanding this bill, because it is complicated. And just for the benefit of everybody watching, I think you probably have 7-0 approval that everybody agrees this needs to be updated and we need to fix this. The question is how and what it looks like and exactly the contours. Ms. Rhodes, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, because you're the expert, and you may be able to help, and Ms. Miller might even jump in. As I understand the way this bill is drafted, the accessory retail can be up to 1%. The storage can be up to 30%, and there's up to 15% that can be dealing with the accessory landscaping and tree operations. So you've got sort of these defined buckets of how much of a particular landscaping, well, I should say nursery landscaping operation can be different things. So that's what you're talking about as a challenge for zoning inspectors, to go out and say, are you in fact using 1% or are you using 1.5%? Are you using 30% or is it actually 32%? That's the concern you have. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Now, understanding what Councilwoman Hare just said about the intention of the bill, it sounds like there's this distinction about storage of these materials versus the sale of these materials potentially? Or am I missing that?
The storage and direct sale versus the services. The services is where you get all the loud truck noise. Many nurseries may sell mulch to a consumer without having landscaping services. So the services side is separate from the sale side.
So to the extent that you have services in the bill you've drafted, take the admins amendments off, what is the amount of the land that can be occupied by service-type industries?
It remains, it's not touched by this bill. It remains at the accessory requirement of 15%.
Okay. So at maximum, 15% of the operation can be 15% of the services?
Services, correct.
Got it. So then I guess coming back to the administration, Ms. Rhodes, with this, does the administration agree that 15% is the right number, or do you think it needs to be bigger? And do you have any concerns in expanding that number? Or do you think that's the right spot?
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. I would actually defer this to Lynn Miller in planning and zoning, because they're more intimately involved with this issue. But my question to this department was, will this amended bill resolve the enforcement and violation cases? That's what I'm mostly concerned about. And based on my response, it will.
Ms. Miller, of course, if you'd like to comment.
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. We're comfortable with a 15% limit on landscaping operations. I'll elaborate a little bit on what makes this bill so complicated for everybody, I think. There's the different activities that occur on these business sites that are related to nurseries and plant cultivation. And that can include retail sales, it can include a landscaping operation. Based on the new bill, it can include storage and display of materials. So when, particularly when we get a complaint about a business and our inspector's got on the site, it's not always, there's some overlap between all of those activities that I just named, and it's not always real clear whether a stockpile of mulch is being used by the business owner to cultivate their plants on the site, or is it being used as part of a landscape operation off the site? Same for retail sales. You know, is it there because it's being used in plant cultivation? Is it there because it's being sold? So it's So it's, it's, there's just some overlap, and it makes the picture a little bit muddy. And I think that's what everybody wants to try to clarify with some piece of legislation. So we do think the bill hopefully would help to clarify that because it distinguishes between retail, display and storage, and landscape operations. I don't know whether it will completely resolve the confusion when we have on a site, and we're trying to figure out exactly what portion of the site is being used for what, but it might help.
Madam Chair, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Our sound system was sick over the weekend. Some doctoring work was done this morning, but a lot of the mics are still very quiet. So I need to ask everybody who is talking into a mic to talk loudly, pretty much, because people in the back are having a hard time hearing us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll make that happen. We have little volume buttons on our controllers, too. Do the little plus button make us louder? I don't know. I think I've pressed it as many times as I can.
Yeah, I think they're up, too. But anyway, just use a big voice tonight.
Okay. Ms. Rhodes, did you want to add on to Ms. Miller's comments? Or is your light on for a different reason? Still, okay, all right, very good. I just want to make sure we're giving everyone an opportunity to speak. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if the landscape services are not accessory to the principal use, and they're part of the principal, no, what? I thought you just said that was...
Sorry, Jessica Hare, District 7. Landscape services stay accessory. They are not touched by this bill. Landscape services stay accessory. They stay at a maximum of 15%.
So this is the concern about expanding it holistically to 45%? Is that then you're going to wind up having these landscape services taking over the whole project?
100%, exactly.
Got it. Okay, now I understand. Thank you.
All right. Hey, that's good. I think this is helping everyone understand what's going on with this bill a little bit better. So we will now open the public hearing on Bill 57-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
Yes, Madam Chair. We've received considerable testimony through the online testimony tool. 120 submissions. That has all been, gone to the council. It's in part, excuse me, I can talk this evening. It's been added to the record. It's included in the summary that is posted online. In addition, this afternoon, we have gotten a handful of emails from people as well about Bill 57-22, and I've tried to share those with you all as best as I can. I will complete that tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council on Bill Number 57-22. When your name is called, please come up to the table, have a seat, and state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. And I will call, well, we've got six seats down there. I will call up the first six speakers. John Hopkins, Robert Leib, Craig Berger, Susan Margulies, Joe Devlin, and Lori Alton. I need to ask for, no applause, but I appreciate the sentiment, even though it wasn't for And Mr. Hopkins, you are the first one signed up. So I'm not sure who Mr. Hopkins is. Oh, is Mr. Hopkins not here? We do have one empty chair. Maybe that, he's, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, then we will move on to Mr. Leib. Mr. Leib, you have two minutes. State your name and address for the record, and you may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the county council. I'm Robert Leib. My home address is 3594 Owens Meadow Way, Harwood, Maryland. I'm here this evening to urge your adoption of Bill 57-22 concerning zoning for nurseries with landscaping and plant sales. My family has lived in southern Anarundel County going on 36 years, in Reva for 13 years, right across the street from Reva Gardens, and now in Harwood for 23 years. As a resident of South County, I have learned and personally experienced how integral and important the contributions of small businesses are to the health and prosperity of our communities. Small businesses, just like Reva Gardens of Diane and Dave Moorhead. In the past two years, while dealing with COVID, we have all seen too many small, family-run businesses having to close their doors due to government mandates and regulations. The proposed legislation, Bill 57-22, which you are discussing this evening, will help ensure that yet another small business is not shuttered due to outdated government zoning regulations. As you are aware, small businesses like Diane and Dave's at Reva Gardens are the lifeblood of Anarundel County. Reva Gardens is part of our community family, and we need to fight to preserve our community family. I most respectfully request your unanimous support of Bill 57-22. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leib. Next, we have Craig Berger. State your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes. You may proceed.
My name is Craig Berger. My address is 345 Brunswick Place in Reva, Maryland. We live in a community that's right across the street from Reva Gardens. My wife and I and family have been doing business with Reva Gardens for 42 years. And I can tell you that as we get older, it is nice to have a place that's convenient, that we can walk to, to get any products that we need without having to drive all the way to Home Depot or other places to get products. It keeps us old people off the roads, which is a good thing. And also with the price of gas, it's nice to have something closed. But this family business has been a very big contributor to the Annapolis Landing community, and would love to see it remain in business, remain intact. So I please support Bill 57-22 and keep this wonderful business thriving. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Berger. Next on my list is Susan Margulies.
Hello, I'm Susan Margulies of 113 Conduit Street, and I'm a passionate native plant gardener and a passionate supporter of Bay Ridge Nursery. And it's horrifying that we're here, and of course, we're here because the numerics in the existing city code was weaponized against our small nurseries. And I can see that we're all struggling, and everybody is focused on making sure that that doesn't happen again. And we've got all the owners of the nurseries here, and so I'm confident that whatever the numbers are that will work to keep our nurseries in business, that will be the numbers that go into the bill so that we don't have zealous inspectors with tape measures out, you know, measuring 15% versus 13%. And we all know that being so close to the watershed, native plants and pollinators, and homeowners like myself who are planting gardens by free choice on their own property is the best weapon that we have for the health of the watershed. So save our nurseries, and let's get the numbers right this time, and save our nurseries, rah rah.
Thank you very much, Ms. Margulies. I'm going to learn to say your name, say it correctly eventually. I'm getting closer every time, I think. All right. Mr. Joe Devlin, you are next. Name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Joe Devlin with the law firm of Council Barrett, El Cosmo, and Nolan in Annapolis. I am a resident of Annapolis and Anarundel County in West Annapolis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on this landscaping with landscaping and nursery with landscaping and plant sales, which I think has been known what it has been for a long time, but in recent years, it's just gotten a little morphed in terms of what it really means. And I think what this bill does, as presented here tonight by the council, clarifies and puts into black and white that which these uses do, and have always done, but it's become a little gray in terms of how you interpret it. And I think that the sales that, the way this bill has been structured is very logical and makes sense, and in fact, makes it easier for enforcement. Because if you look at it from the standpoint that nursery with landscaping and plant sales is the principal use, nursery with landscaping and plant sales, you go to one of these places, you go there, go to Bay Ridge Gardens, Lori, right here, is one of my clients, next door, I and Jack own it. You go there, you see on the right side, it's all the nursery, the plant sales, greenhouses, this and that, and a bunch of displays in the middle. You go to the other side, there's a building that has a whole bunch of other landscaping type stuff, shovels, this and that, plant typing stuff, all that. And they've got some other retail, non-plant, non-landscaping retail stuff. And in the back, they've got bins, what they call the bins, where you've got some gravel, sand, mulch, whatever. And people come there, loaded on their own truck, where they'll be taken to their property for them. But it's really, again, the product sales, and that's what nursery with landscaping and plant sales has always been. Nursery where you're growing plants and trees and whatnot in containers has been what it is. 90% of the plants in this country are grown in containers. And nursery, products, and plant sales. What has always been accessory is the 1% retail sales. And if in your little building, which all of them have, you've got your plant and your landscaping stuff, you want to throw in some other stuff, you can do it, but you're 1%. The other is that landscaping operations...
Mr. Devlin, I'm going to ask you to conclude your remarks.
I am, right now. Landscape and tree cutting operations are limited to 15% because they are different. They are accessory to the nursery with landscaping and plant sales. And if you go there, you see it. So for this, this bill just clarifies what it is. From the grandfathering perspective, we want to make sure that those people that are operating all these years, over the various definitions, so long as they meet, they're 1%, they're 15%, and they are willing to be limited, which they are, to 30% of their storage of that principal use is okay. We're good. I think from enforcement's standpoint, when you go to that nursery and you see the plants and the pots and this and then that and the other, you'll know that's the nursery with landscaping, plant sales. Let me find one percent of it.
Mr. Devlin, I do need you to conclude.
If they've got it. Thank you, I'm done.
All right, thank you. All right. And our next person testifying is Lori Alton. State your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Lori Alton. Am I have that right? I'm Lori Alton. My husband and I own Bay Ridge Nursery. We've been there for 19 years. The two of us work seven days a week. We work many more hours, you know, dirt in certain times of the year. Sometimes we do have more of one thing versus another, but a nursery is plants with, you know, accessory landscaping is one thing, but we have items of mulch, gravels, and items like that that we need to sell. We sell a lot of that, so people come to us for that. Without those, they're going to end up going to another place like Home Depot, and we need this. We can't afford to lose that. We've worked very hard for what we have. I believe we're doing everything legit. I believe we're doing everything the way we purchase it as a nursery with all of those items already there. Already there, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. But we need this. And if we lose the rights of this nursery, I don't know what we're going to do. And I do wish, you know, we need to have this clarified because it's very confusing. People are like, what are you going to court for? Sometimes we can't even answer them because we don't know ourselves. The county gave us a certificate eight years ago, and now they're telling us we have the wrong one. We're doing the same thing. So I don't understand how we're going through this. And I guess unless you're in our shoes, because this is our second time going through this, it needs to be clarified. And we need to sell the bulk items. It's not stockpiling. It's like stocking a grocery store shelf. We need those items. People come there to buy it, not just landscapers, but homeowners as well. We need that. It's very important for our livelihood, for all of us. So we thank you for listening to us, and we really hope that you're going to pass this bill because we need it. Without you, we're not going to be able to survive.
Thank you very much for your testimony. This panel is dismissed, and I will call down the next three speakers on my list. All right. Next up is Jack Alton, Nancy Lowry-Mortier, and Frank Smith. And apologies if I didn't get those names correct. I was especially worried about Frank Smith. Jack, is that you?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. You may have the floor. State your name and address. You have two minutes for the record.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jack Alton. I live at 2801 Fennel Road in Edgewater, Maryland. My wife, Lori, and I manage, we own and manage the Bay Ridge Nursery at 1120 Bay Ridge Road. Our nursery business has been here since 1967. Our family has operated as a, our family has operated as a nursery here for nearly 20 years. We haven't changed our business or operations much, if at all during that time. We ask this bill to be passed so that the code reflects the longstanding use at our property. Our business currently has a certificate of use, nursery with landscaping and plant sales. As a nursery, we grow, display, and sell plants and pots, since that's how it's done. As a nursery, also sells more than plants. We do not have a landscaping contractor business or a tree cutting business, but we do sell landscaping products, mulch soil, gravels, as part of our nursery. And we also sell things like bird baths and pottery as part of the nursery. And we also sell things, I'm sorry, we have, we have, we have had interactions with zoning enforcement interpreting the code throughout the years. Each time, after investigations, we have been found to be in compliance. We have had over 12 inspections by the county enforcement in 19 years, and not one fine. There is another violation case pending against us now, although we operate the same. This is a very upsetting, time-consuming, and expensive for us.
Please conclude your remarks.
We have, we have had many sleepless nights, confusion, having to explain this petition to our customers. This matter has affected us personally, financially, causing a lot of stress, monetary costs to defend our source of personal income. This is, this is our income. Our customers are very concerned about our future existence. They tell us that they rely on us to provide nursery and landscaping and plant items locally. We just want to be able to continue our business as we have without harassment. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alton. Ms. Lowry, I'll just let you introduce yourself.
It's okay. My name's Nancy Lowry-Mortier. I live at 1001 Old Bay Ridge Road in the community of Annapolis Roads. I've been in the nursery industry because I was born into it. I have a degree in horticulture, so I've been operating my own business with my husband now, but since 1989 in the city of Annapolis. These small garden centers, all garden centers with the gamut of products that they sell and provide for homeowners and landscapers are pertinent, not only just for people that like the backyards, but for our Anarundel County tax base. So I'm not really understanding everything that's involved in this bill. It sounds like we're trying to put restrictions on people that are hardworking and provide a very good service and have golden hearts that want to improve our environment that we all need. So if I'm understanding it correctly, imposing unnecessary restrictions will certainly cause many well and long-established businesses, nurseries, and garden centers a reduction in income. Can the county afford to lose the economic contributions, i.e. taxes, that these businesses generate? The majority of landscapers and nurseries are small mom-and-pop businesses, and ease of purchase, propinquity to job site is good for business, me being a business owner, good for homeowners, me being a homeowner, and good for the health and beauty of this county, being a resident of this county. Restrictions on the sale and square footage and storage of hardscape materials, or whatever it would be, on nurseries and garden centers will minimize businesses providing these products and will result in congestion of already overdeveloped and under-improved roadways and infrastructure at the reduced business supplying, at the reduction of businesses supplying these products. So I'm sorry if my words are not completely aligned with the very confusing, as you stated yourself, bill that's being posed, but I really think we need to think about small businesses and make whatever restrictions... businesses and make whatever restrictions or regulations are suited and able to justify their existence.
Thank you very much. All right, this panel is dismissed, and I appreciate the restraint that I hear in the audience. All right, and we do not have Mr. Frank Smith, or, and I'll give one last call for John Hopkins, if either of those individuals are here and would like to testify. All right, then at this time, if there is anyone else here in the audience who would like to come down and speak about this bill, you may come to the table at this time and have your two minutes as the other speakers. Oh.
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Yes, as, as these folks walk up to testify, I just do want to clarify to the previous panel, I can certainly understand and appreciate the complexity of this legislation. I do want to be clear that the bill as drafted does not make any restrictions, so please be rest assured in that arena that the bill is just codifying existing practices as they were until recent years, so that your favorite local nurseries can continue to operate and provide local to-you services and products. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. All right, I will go from left to right on this panel. So at the end of the table, yep, that's, or from my left, I should say, from my left to right. So you may have the floor. Two minutes, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Lonnie Moyer. My, my address is 1019 Forest Hills Avenue, Annapolis, Maryland. In full disclosure, I do work on a part-time contractual basis with Anarundel County managing beautification projects. I am not testifying in that capacity at all. I am testifying as a private citizen who is also the owner of a landscape company. One thing that I might be able to offer that could help simplify this, I own a landscape company. I provide landscape services. I go to people's yards, I install plants, I make designs, et cetera, et cetera. Jack and Lori, with, for example, with Bay Ridge Nursery, do not provide any landscape services. They provide the products that I need to, to make my business happen. The products that they provide are not at all accessory. If you think about it, and I know some of this revolves around the storage of bulk products and the sale of bulk products, in Anarundel County, every, every required stormwater management installation requires, the plants are actually accessory to stormwater management to a certain degree. What is required is sand, leaf grow, it's called bio soil. That is a required landscape item. It is not a service, and it is not an accessory. So if you think, one way to me to simplify this thought, this legislation is to think companies like me provide a service. Businesses like Lori's and Jack's and Reva Gardens provide the products we use. None of it should be in question. It is all necessary. And thank you. It sounds like you all, there's a lot of support for this, and thank you all for making the changes and for supporting this bill.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker?
Hello, my name is Tim Cook. I reside at 411 Paradise Road, Reva, Maryland, about two blocks away from Dave and Diana's nursery. I appreciate what I am understanding as a significant amount of support within the council for the bill as it's been drafted, and I think it's really good step forward to be codifying some of the details that will help them stay in business. I just wanted to be present as a member of the community in support of it as well, and I also wanted to touch on a detail that seems to be a little bit on the sidelines, which is the retail portion of these businesses. In particular, the food portion of the retail operation. David and Diana provide fresh market food to the community, including tomatoes, potatoes, onions, strawberries, blueberries. My family goes there often, almost every weekend to pick up a fresh batch of strawberries and blueberries, and we discuss with them the farms from which they come. We also frequent the Anarundel County Farmers Market, which is right up the street. We also have the, well, I'll say the misfortune of spending time on Route 2, which is an entirely different zoning animal. And it is incredibly refreshing to come over the South River Bridge into Reva and see the residential five zoning that also includes a nursery that we can walk to, as one of the other gentlemen mentioned, and get incredibly fresh food. It's important, and as you may be aware, in cities such as Baltimore, there's a tremendous amount of effort going into things like health disparity studies, socioeconomic disparity studies, and discovering that the lack of healthy food within the urban environment is a major issue contributing to disease and other disparity topics. So in the context of a different group of governors, we're seeing them really, really wanting to have businesses just like David and Diana's within their community. So it would only make sense that we would want to avoid pushing them out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, our next panelist.
My name is Barry DeRoche, and I live at 148 Cartman Drive in Edgewater. First, I'd like to thank council members here and Beathard for sponsoring this badly-needed legislation and for the chair joining in tonight. Yeah, I want to give an even bigger thank you to the small business people that have owned these businesses and served our community so well for so long and been such a tremendous resource to us. It's great to go into these places. You leave with a smile on your face. They're, they're great people. You know, when you, when you own a small business, it's not just your job, it's your life. There are no vacations. You take your business on vacation with you. It's a hard thing to do. And, you know, it gets even harder when you've got to deal with a lot of government. One of the things I did this week is I read the complaints that brought us here, and it broke my heart. Okay, I saw the administration down here earlier collaborating with the council on certain measures. And I hope that we resolve this tonight, we protect the businesses, but I also hope we find a way to work more collaboratively in the future, so this isn't necessary, so court filings don't take place, so these people that are the pillars of our community don't feel their businesses are threatened and lose sleep at night. I don't think that's the type of community that any of us want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next speaker, you may have the floor.
Hi, it's Beverly McWilliams, 402 Circle Road in Reva, Maryland. I just want to speak in support of this bill because, again, I've lived here for over 20-some years and have been to both Bay Ridge and Reva Gardens, and I'm supportive of small business. I'm glad that you all are clarifying the inspectors' roles to come out there and not pick on these people, because I don't know what I would have done without these people for food and my, half my yard is dependent on Reva Gardens. And Diane gives me all kinds of good advice on pests and all kinds of other plants and stuff that I didn't know. So something very simple, it's just they're important. I support small businesses. I can ride my bike there. Cuts down on pollution, and thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. And to our last member of this panel, you may have the floor.
My name's Doug Waters. I live at 3304 Strawberry Run in Davidsonville. I moved there 30 years ago. My first day when I commuted up to Columbia, Maryland, I drove up to Reva Road and drove out and saw this beautiful little garden place. Been driving by there for 30 years, going in a couple of times a week, picking up $10, $20, order of mulch. Just a phenomenal little business. And the thing that, the reflection here, and I support what you guys are trying to do, but for 30 years, the business didn't change. It's been the same business. It's had the same storage, it's had the same plants, it's had the same Christmas trees at, you know, at Christmas, the same vegetables, wonderful vegetables always. Got to tell you, I made those really expensive cherries. I bought the cherries today with that high-end stuff. I've made three batches. Their cherries are phenomenal. So, you know, I say, I agree, small businesses are the backbone of our, our economies. I worked in big corporate world for all of my career. These little places need our help. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you very much. All right, this panel is dismissed, and if there is anyone else in the audience who would like to come down and speak about this bill, I invite you to come down at this time. I'm still going left to right, so, you know, my left. All right, and I know Ms. Johnson will be joining us. Oh, you are so kind. You may have the floor.
I'm Laurie Vagnoni. I live at 606 Overhill Drive in Edgewater, Maryland, for the last 14 years, since 1990, since 1988, had a home in Annapolis Cove. I still have a home where my daughter, my adult daughter and my grandkids are living. So I've been, oddly enough, in neighborhoods for the past 30-plus years that are just down the block from Bay Ridge Gardens or Davidsonville. And I've been in and out of both of these businesses. I really don't know the owners. I'm just a, I'm just a, you know, customer, but I kind of run my mouth, so we chat. And I found it ironic that in this situation, it's the, it's the clash of regulation and common sense. The two things never really go well together, and I think that's just a human nature factor. But when both people, which are great providers of, of services, and I'm, I'm the product of a father and a grandfather who ran their own small little businesses in Maryland and Washington DC, and I grew up that way, taking care of the small businesses is the backbone of our country. But the thing that really drove me to come here for the first time ever and talk to you guys is the fact that they had the same story. We didn't change, we didn't do anything different, but how the guidelines were being interpreted, all of a sudden, we're about to lose our business. And it just seemed to be such a, a fixable wrong, that I just encourage you guys to use more common sense in writing your regulations, so that when they're being interpreted by the people on the street, they've got some latitude to let these people do what they do, which is awfully great work to the community, and it makes a whole lot more. I don't think I need to say anything more than that, but thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Johnson, you are next.
Thank you. Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis. I have been a delinquent in terms of preparation for really, even really looking at this bill. Conversely, I've heard, you know, while I was approaching the building, the heart and soul of this community needs small business. If we didn't learn it anyplace before that, we know from COVID, it doesn't help to have somebody a continent away who does great, you know, X, Y, and Z. We need them here, and we need these people. And they're wonderful people. And years ago, there was a book, Plants Are Like People. Talk to your plants. And that may seem like lunacy, but it does make you feel better, and they really do grow better. I've had students do experiments with it. But the other point I want to make is more, well, it isn't, you know, I've been talking about the zoning enforcement in my situation. It turned out, I mean, these people told me I had junk and debris. My water bottles, my case of water bottles has to go. You can't have that outside. Those are the drinking bottles. My gallons of water, oh, you can't have those. But I can't wrestle with a garden hose to water my new bushes. You know, I need those. It doesn't matter, you can't have them. My emergency crutch sit down at the foot of the stairs so that, because I used to use only one crutch. You know, I need, you know, if I need two of them, you know, well, you can't have that outside, it has to be inside your front door. This is unbelievable. Yes, I said to him, you don't mean, if I can't get up the stairs with my one crutch, I have to crawl up the stairs, hang onto the doorknob, pull myself off, unlock the door, and reach inside and get out my crutch? And he didn't back down. You can't have that. Oh, but you got to have training. It turns out, the inspector had, has had zero training in how to do zoning enforcement, and I think we need more, more public meetings about zoning enforcement, so that rather than having to do litigation, everybody can get together and say...
Ms. Johnson, I have to ask you to conclude your remarks. You've had, you're over your two minutes.
Okay.
No, we always appreciate your thoughts. You've got, you're a very thoughtful person.
Okay. Well, the point is, work together, love one another, help one another, because life's tough, and it's getting tougher.
I, I think we can all agree on that. All right, I'll, I'll leave my comments out for now. All right, you may have the floor.
Hi, my name is Tanya Hartman. I live at 2868 Hamilton Road in Reva, Maryland. This is my son Travis Lowman. He lives with me as well. To your point, people need to be more, more giving to people that are not like everybody else, and they have a little bit of hard time, and that kind of stuff probably wouldn't go on. But I won't be as fancy as everybody else, but I will confirm that nothing has changed at Reva Gardens forever, because I lived in Edgewater for 20 years and Annapolis area most of the rest of the time, but now I've been one and a half houses behind them for the past four years. Their business no way negatively infects our neighborhood at all. It's, they're quiet, they're respectful of their neighbors. My son also works there with them. He is autistic, so they have provided him an employment. They have provided him a way to get there, because he can walk through the backyard and get there. I don't have to worry about taking him, picking him up or anything like that, so I'm fully in support of the bill and don't understand why either, after they've been in business for so long that we're even talking about it.
All right, thank you very much. If you would like to testify, you may.
I'm good.
All right.
He's a man of little words. He's autistic.
We appreciate you coming to sit at the table. All right, you are next.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Doyle. I'm at 1734 Swinburne Avenue in Crofton. I own a small farming business in Glen Burnie, so I'm a resident and a business owner, and we do hydroponic farming in a warehouse in Glen Burnie, and then we have a couple of greenhouses around. And we sell products to Reva Gardens, basically basil, live basil plants. We sell to Grau's, we sell to Harris Teed, a bunch of different stores. Anyway, my comment is really about the retail side of it. I have a background in commercial real estate, and I used to have a large commercial real estate portfolio, and I hear a lot of numbers being talked about, 1%, 2% of retail. What is retail? What is this? What is that? And so for me, my only comment is, the world keeps changing in terms of the way businesses operate. For instance, you know, you see supermarkets getting away from canned goods and paper goods and those types of things. So if you're trying to fit retail into a box, you don't really know what that's going to be in two years, five years, or 10 years, right? So the bird baths and the different things that everyone's talking about, they might be obsolete in terms of being a viable business product. So if there's a conforming use on the property in a building, right, because most retail needs to be covered and protected from the weather, if it's conforming use in the building, why are we judging what that is? You know, because if it's a conforming use in the building and it's protected, let the people operate their businesses and decide whether it's food, whether it's bird seed, whether it's mousetraps, or whatever else they need to run their business. It might actually turn into some kind of technology that they sell to help operate their businesses or do something. So for me, I, I think it's kind of crazy that, you know, you're standing in a building that might be 5,000 feet, and you're trying to figure out if 500 feet, or 600 feet, or 800 feet is retail, and then what is appropriate retail? So that's it.
Thank you very much. You may have the floor.
Hi, I'm Doris Williams. I live at 3118 Reva Road, across from the Reva Firehouse. I don't see any harm whatsoever that our nurseries, whether it's Reva Gardens or any of the others, are doing any harm. In fact, they beautify our neighborhood and, and make it look good. And as far as Diane and Dave go, whenever I have any questions about what type of plant is this, is this a weed, is it something that I grew last year and don't remember what it was, and I can take it down, and she'll say, no, that's a weed. I said, oh, good, now I can dig them up and throw them away. Right. Or it's an invasive weed, and it's going to keep on going, but yeah, it does no harm to the community, and I would be so sad if, if they were no longer there. I just, I would, it would just break my heart. This would... This would, they don't do no harm. They have beautiful products, beautiful store. Everything in there is great. You can, like, you've heard before, the fruits and the vegetables, and I've seen their basil and all that in there. And I look, I look in there to see how, how is, how is they're keeping that fresh? And I want to do it in my house, so how do I do that? So I do, I do have a pot with all kinds of herbs, and I cut it, and I put it in water, and I stuck it in my refrigerator, like I see down there in Diane's. I don't know if I'm doing it right, but-
Don't refrigerate basil, it's tropical.
No. Well, it's a cilantro and something else.
That's tropical, too.
Yeah, I shouldn't do that, huh? Oh, okay, good. All right, I'll just go buy it at Diane's. Yeah, and she also says that people come to her store, and they'll say, what is that pink stuff growing down, your neighbor down the street? She's cutting it all down. What is she doing? And, and she says, she's not cutting it down, she's cutting it back. It's going to grow back, don't worry. And they actually buy some from her.
Thank you very much. All right, this panel is dismissed, and I will make one last call. If there is anyone else who would like to come and speak about Bill 57-22, we've got six, six seats at a time.
Going left or right?
It could be either. Ms. Johnson. Shh. All right, sir, you may have the floor. Your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Okay, my name's David Moorhead. I live at 3234 Reva Road, which is on the property of Reva Gardens. I'm cone owner. I think sometimes, as you can tell. I'm pretty sure y'all saw how this little place brought the community, brings the community together. And the last thing I got to say is, I want to thank the people behind me just for their support. All right, that is it. Just their support. Thank you.[749.16][749.16](APPLAUSE).
All right, at this time, seeing no additional movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill number 57-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 57-22.
Bill number 57-22, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Nurseries With Landscaping and Plant Sales.
All right, at this time, we have a few amendments from the administration and from Ms. Hare and Ms. Fiedler. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment makes the effective date for nurseries with landscaping and plant sales located in the RCA of the critical area contingent upon certain approval of the Maryland Critical Area Commission.
All right, this is an admin amendment. Mr. Barron, you and your team have the floor.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Just making clear, we're doing the critical area one, but the amendments in my folder aren't numbered. I'll turn it over to Ms. Rhodes, but basically, we want to make sure that we are in compliance with state requirements for the critical area. So this amendment would make sure that if there is one of these changes that are operating, or one of these businesses that are operating in the critical area, this change, if the Critical Area Commission were to say is not allowed, would not take down the entire bill. And Ms. Rhodes can probably give a better explanation.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. Pete Barron pretty much covered it. Any change to Title 13, which is our critical area program, in Articles 18 as well as 17? Article 18 lists this use as an allowed use in the RCA, so any change to that law would require Critical Area Commission approval.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, let's see, I'm sorry, I see Ms. Hare, you have your light, and Ms. Fiedler, you have your light. You may have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. I just have a couple of questions, I suppose. In prior bills where this section was changed or altered, approval by the Critical Area Commission was not included as part of the bill. So I'm trying to understand, number one, I guess, kind of what, what brought this up here? And then, number two, do we actually have any nurseries in the RCA in the county?
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. The fact that we're making changes as amended to the term of the use, that would be considered a change to the Critical Area Program. An example I can provide to you would be the farm alcohol production, where prior to that, we allowed breweries and wineries. Because we only allowed wineries in the RCA, we needed to get Critical Area approval to incorporate the farm alcohol production. So any change, even if it's a word added, the Critical Area Commission would be required to review that.
Did you have a follow-up question? Go, you may proceed. Go ahead.
Maybe this is a question for Office of Law, but the Critical Area Commission can sometimes take a good bit of time before they review legislation and approve it or deny it. If this amendment were to pass, and the bill were to pass, for any nursery that's not in the RCA, is the bill effective immediately? Or is it all subject to the length of time it takes the Critical Area Commission to, to make its decision?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Yeah, this was specifically drafted to allow the rest of the bill to become effective and only for nurseries with landscaping and plant sales in the RCA. If the Critical Area would have, Commission would have a say over that. So they would, their approval or disapproval only would affect those operations, if there are any, in the RCA. But Section Number Three says that for nurseries with landscaping and plant sales not subject to Section Two, which is the Critical Area Law, shall become effective 45 days. So for most of the operations, if not all of them, it'll become effective for them.
Okay. Do, do we know, are there any nurseries in the county, in the RCA currently?
That I don't know. I don't know if OPZ would know that or not.
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. I believe, I believe that there are.
Okay, okay. Ms. Miller, do you agree legally that we're required to have this in here per the terms of, I'm sorry, not Ms. Miller, Ms. Kenny, sorry. I was looking at you, Ms. Miller, because you just answered, and then I meant Ms. Kenny. Do you agree that legally, we're required to have this in here for them to approve? Or is this just a kind of being extra careful?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. I did think it was weird that you were asking Ms. Miller legally.
Sorry.
I do think that it is required, because it does affect a use that is allowed in the critical area. And I know you asked earlier about the, the earlier bill, which that could have been an oversight that it wasn't in there, or it may have been because that bill in 2014 really just changed the acreage area, so maybe it was determined at that point that they didn't have to look at that. But this has actually changed the use a little bit more substantially.
Okay, okay. So, but, so for folks here tonight, if, you know, the nurseries that are not in the RCA, even if this amendment goes through and the bill passes, it's effective immediately for the, or within the 45 days for those nurseries?
Right, within the 45 days.
Excellent, thank you.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. So if we have nurseries with landscaping and plant sales in the RCA, and if any of those nurseries have accessory uses of landscaping operations, they already have the products that we're making principal use of sale. They already have those products on premise, correct? I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
I'm not sure I followed your question.
I'm just trying to understand the, this is, just came, I'm trying to understand the tie with the RCA, if we aren't really sure the number of nurseries and the products that they're selling are similar, although the proportions are different depending on if they are using, taking advantage of the accessory abilities and selling those products with the accessory use.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. I'm not sure that I understand the question, but I think you're asking whether any of those nurseries that are in the RCA, whether they're in compliance with the, with the bill as written, so, or are you asking whether they are in compliance with the current code?
The products that they are selling will essentially remain unchanged. It's just that the bill makes it a principal use, direct to consumer, versus, you know, selling the same products, but also utilizing the accessory use. I'm just trying to understand what the issue, why this is being brought into-
Lori Rhodes, I'm going to try it. Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. Assuming that these businesses that are in the critical area receive their zoning certificate of use, the only thing that will, that will change is the quantity, the scope in which we are allowing those uses. So I'm trying to keep it simple as to what the goal is we're trying to achieve, which is to allow our regulations to evolve with these businesses. So I'm assuming that in the critical area, if they have a zoning certificate of use, we would presume that they're going to be meeting the criteria in the bill as, as passed. And if they don't, then they would be in violation of those provisions that would be in the adopted bill. Is that what you're trying to say?
You got closer to the answer that I was looking for. So thank you.
Okay, yes.
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. I'll, I'll make another attempt then to answer Ms. Fiedler's question. I think you're asking that if for some reason the Critical Area Commission did not approve this bill, then the portions of the bill that apply to non-critical area nurseries would go forward. And I, I believe that that would mean that nurseries located in the critical area, because the bill would not be approved for those cases, would have to continue to operate under the current code.
Thank you. You win the prize for answering the question. Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lacey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it sounds to me like it's pretty important to know whether or not we have any nurseries that are currently operating within the RCA part of the critical area. And I think, if no one can think of any right now, then let's just assume that there maybe aren't any. And if I were looking to locate a business, I don't know why I would want to put it, a business like this, in a highly regulated environmental area like the RCA. So to me, this seems, seems premature without understanding the full facts of, do we have nurseries that are currently in the RCA?
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. The Critical Area Law always trumps zoning. So irrespective of what we pass here, if the Critical Area Laws are more restrictive, they govern. I mean, that's pretty much how the Critical Area Laws, so if we, if we decide-
I don't disagree with that. That's not my point. My point is, why do we need this if it's not reasonably likely that a business, a new business, I'm assuming we have none, because we can't think of any, so why would a new business locate itself within the RCA doing these uses? I'm positing, it doesn't seem reasonably likely. But it's more a comment. You don't have to answer.
I just want to add the comment that I've been trying to pull up our critical area maps and, from our county website on my laptop here, and as best as I can tell, Bay Ridge Nursery, I mean, you may already know this, the owners of this may already know that they are or are not in the critical area, but Bay Ridge Nursery does not appear to be in the critical area, nor does Reva Gardens. Go ahead, Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District Seven. One final question. I guess if, if the Critical Area Laws are going to trump anything we do by zoning anyways, where is the necessity in this amendment? I appreciate that you're trying to target it very narrowly so that the rest of the bill can move forward anyways, but I do want to make sure we don't muddy the waters a little bit too much and create an issue if there's not an issue. If, if current practice is just, if we're codifying current practice and we're making sure these businesses can move forward in the same way that they've moved forward for the last several decades, theoretically, the critical area has, has spoken on this, so to speak, you know, for the last several decades, and it's, and is well-known. So I am, I do wonder if this is just not necessary for that reason, if they already trump it regardless.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. And I think a lot of this discussion, I don't, I don't anticipate any problems with the Critical Area Commission, because I think that this is probably not something that they would necessarily take an issue with. But out of caution, because it is a use that is allowed in the resource conservation area, the Critical Area Commission does have a say as to whether these changes are approvable as to, as far as they're concerned in the critical area. And going off your question, where you asked about the Critical Area Law trumping zoning law, there, there is nothing right now pertaining to this use in the critical area, and that's why you need the Critical Area to affirm that the conditions in the county code are okay with them for the, for the RCA use.
What would happen if we did not pass the amendment?
I think the Critical Area Commission could still disapprove the change for the RCA, whether or not the amendment is there, because they, they do have the ultimate-
So they can look at it regardless?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I think actually would happen, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Kenny, is if we pass this bill, and the Critical Area Commission looks at it without this, what I will call insurance, or what we sometimes refer to as a savings clause, without this, if they strike down the bill, and they say, this is inappropriate, what you've done in the RCA, then it takes the whole thing out. And then everything goes back to what it was before, because it gets rid of the entire change for the code. Whereas with this savings clause, what you're doing is saying, in the event that they strike it down in the RCA, this change that we're making still applies in the non-RCA areas. That's the way I understand it. Is that how you follow it, too?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. I don't think the Critical Area Commission could strike down the bill as a whole, because the bill as a whole doesn't apply to the critical area. They would only really have the authority to disapprove the portions of the bill that apply in the critical area.
Yeah, I do, yeah, thank you. So then I guess, what's the practical impact of passing this or not passing it?
Well, this makes it clear that the change in the law does not apply in the critical area unless and until the Critical Area Commission approves that change.
Whereas if we pass it without this, it would just apply already? Like, it would, I guess what I'm trying to understand-
I still think it has to go before the Critical Area Commission, and I think it's required under state law that they, that they approve or disapprove any changes in the Critical Area Commission. So even if this clause, like you said, this clause is a savings clause that does at least ensure that-
That's what I thought it was. Then you disagreed with me, and you said you didn't see it that way.
Well, it's a very narrowly construed savings clause, so it doesn't, doesn't kick out the whole bill. Like, most of the Critical Area Commission provisions do-
Right.
-kick out the whole bill if they don't approve it, but this is not a Critical Area bill, per se.
Okay.
All right, seeing no additional questions on Amendment Number One, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One. Ms. Fiedler.
I'll just say really quickly, if it doesn't matter one way or the other, and this is a bit of insurance, I like insurance. Aye.
Oh, that "aye" was not capital letter "I," it was A-Y-E, "aye."
Sorry.
Okay, that was yes. Okay, gotcha. Ms. Hare.
I was just going to say, thank you all for answering all of those questions. I appreciate it. I, I am very grateful that you narrowly tailored it, so that it really is saving those other nurseries that are not in the RCA. So I appreciate that. And with that, I'll vote aye.
Ms. Lacey.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment modifies the definition of nurseries with landscaping and plant sales, modifies the conditional use requirements for nurseries with landscaping and plant sales to restrict accessory uses to the lesser of 45% of the area used for the nursery operation or one acre, and provides that nurseries with landscaping and plant sales in existence as of April 7, 2014, will be considered a lawful use if certain requirements are met.
Thank you. Once again, this is an admin amendment. Mr. Barron, you have the floor, along with your team.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think we all agree that, that change is, is necessary in the code. What, what the intent of this amendment is, is to provide planning and zoning, our enforcement folks, with sort of very clear- with sort of very clear rules, because I think what we've seen here is sort of the very nature of the businesses make some of the enforcement questions difficult. And there's a gentleman in the second-to-last panel that came up that I thought made some very salient points about, you know, this is, businesses evolve, right? We can't just, I think his words were, "Put things in a box," right? And, which is sort of what the reasoning behind, and Ms. Rhodes mentioned this in her comments at the beginning part of the bill, which is, we should have an approach that provides the maximum flexibility, while still, to Ms. Fiedler's point earlier, balances those neighborhood neighbor concerns with, you know, truck traffic and all of that stuff that could be inherent in some of those activities. So, what the intent of this amendment is to make OPZ's job clear, make it clear for the businesses what they need to comply with, and to provide a reasonable amount of flexibility. And so, that's what the administration attempted to do in this amendment. Ms. Rhodes, feel free to add anything if you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. What we don't have before us is facts. We do not know that the existing businesses would be in compliance with the 1%, unless they provided a site plan to show and prove that. And again, we don't want to put them in a box, which is why we combine the 30% and the 15% to give them the maximum flexibility, so that they can have the uses that exist. And that's the reason why I believe this amendment should be passed.
All right. At this time, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, oh, I'm sorry, we need to have some discussion. I'm not sure who is first, but I will let, okay. Ms. Hare.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. I appreciate the intent of this amendment. I have concerns for a couple of reasons. But, the first is that you're creating all of this and taking the storage, display, and sale of the products, and taking them out of the principal use that we have put them into, and put them in an accessory use, and you've, and lumped it together with the other items. The idea in clarifying that they're part of the principal use is to make it easier for these folks to operate the way they have operated for the last number of decades. And so, taking this and putting it into the accessory side of things, I have concerns on the front end with just which bucket you're putting it into, principal versus accessory. I'd like to keep it in the principal use, which is not where this amendment puts it. The other piece of this is lumping it in with the landscaping services. That is where we see a lot of these problems with truck traffic and a lot of community concerns. And so, while it may be easier for planning and zoning to go out and measure 45% once, I think knowing what's part of the principal use and having the landscaping services be separate on its own as the accessory use actually makes a lot more sense for these folks who are just trying to operate, you know, with their growing operation and their sales operation. And then, the last piece of this, actually, is that the way this is written, the 45%, it says 45% of the area used for the principal nursery operation, or one acre, whichever is less. And I have concerns about that language, because the way we've drafted it, we've drafted it on a percentage of the lot. So, if you have a nursery that, I don't know, maybe it's eight acres, maybe it's 10 acres, but several acres of that nursery, or it's actually just wooded properly, and maybe they're only using an acre or an acre and a half for growing purposes and plant sales and the principal operation, now you've said that their accessory, the size of their accessory operation is tied to the amount that they grow. I just, I actually think it gets quite a bit more complicated for folks trying to come in and figure out what's principal, what's accessory? How much is this 45%? Do the pathways in between the plants count towards this? I think it's actually made it much more complicated. So, I have a strong opposition to this amendment, notwithstanding, I understand the good intentions of it. I am happy, over the next couple of weeks, to try and work with the administration in planning and zoning, if you really have concerns and ways that we might be able to tweak this. But I think this amendment inadvertently really undoes the intent of the bill, and I think it will actually make it harder for these folks to operate. The grandfathering piece that is in here, we haven't gotten to Amendment 3 yet, but Councilwoman Fiedler and I do have a grandfathering amendment that addressed that portion of it, so that piece would still be covered. Thank you.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. What continues, the issue that continues to be raised is landscaping services. We have a separate use category in the code that's called landscaping tree contractor, and I believe that is defined, which would clearly distinguish the landscaping that's related to the amended bill versus what's already allowed in the code, I believe, as a special exception use in certain districts. So, I don't believe there would be an issue in confusing the landscape services with what the amended bill attempts to do, which is simplify how this use would be interpreted by the inspectors, which currently, there is a lot of confusion, which I believe leads to extended periods of time in trying to resolve some of these violations. Because I believe this amended bill will add the clarity that's needed for the departments to enforce the uses as they're currently operating.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. So, there's two components to this amendment, and I'm going to focus on the first, because the second aspect is much larger, I think. So, at the top of the amendment, when it says on page 2 and line 1, "Before sale, insert accessory," that immediately changes the intent of the draft that is before you, that makes the sale a principal. So, that right there is where I can't support the amendment, because we crafted this specifically so that you could be a local gardener who goes in and you buy a whole bunch of plants, you fill up your car, you say, "Listen, I want to buy X amount of mulch, I'm going to pull up my truck, and we'll scoop it in, and then I'm off." And that is part of the principal use of the nursery with landscaping plant sales. It's just, it just upends the bill.
Lynn Miller, Planning and Zoning. When we were thinking about this amendment as a suggested alternative to the bill's approach, we were thinking about the difficulties that zoning enforcement has, but we were also really trying to think of a way to provide more flexibility to the businesses, because they are running into these snags. So, in our minds, you know, it was clear from the sponsor's bill that you felt that storage and display needed to be at least 30% of the site. So, we were trying to make a point to provide enough site area and percentage that would cover all of these related uses, whether it's storage and display, retail, or landscape contracting. So, that was the intent in our mind. I think it was less about whether it's considered accessory or part of the principal use, and it was more about what is the reasonable amount of the site area that could be used for these activities. So, I'm just offering that, is to try to explain what our thought process was.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who was next. Do you guys, okay, go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. So, I think the answer to this is in the definition, right? Everybody knows how I feel about definitions. But, if you go to page 1 of the bill, which this amendment doesn't touch, except for adding the words "off-site," so it sort of expands what's covered, which is, I think, better for the businesses. In there, it defines what the principal use is, right? It says nurseries with landscaping and plant sales, and then it goes through the definition. And the definition that's been amended and added to by Councilwoman Hare and Councilwoman Fiedler is that it includes the sale of products related to landscaping. So, the principal use by definition has now been expanded to include products used for landscaping, mulch, pavers, you know, plants, anything that you want. So, you've literally covered this question of principal versus accessory, just by virtue of the definition. When you then subsequently, in later parts of the bill, talk about how you're changing the accessory use, that has no impact whatsoever on the definition of nurseries with landscaping and plant sales. So, I think the concerns that the sponsors of the bill have about this amendment are misplaced, because the definition establishes what is the principal use. Then, when we get to the accessory use and we talk about percentages that are allowed, that definition still covers the whole property. You could literally use 100% of your property to put landscaping material, mulch, you know, you want to have gravel. I mean, I was over at the stone store this weekend, like, they have bins everywhere. You go back, there's like 100 bins, they're everywhere. So, I'm very familiar with that concept. That's what covers the principal use. The accessory use, then the expansion, and saying 45%, I think actually subsumes exactly what all of the people we've heard testify, have talked about. Don't limit it to 1%, don't limit it to 30%, don't limit it to 15. Literally, give this business the complete flexibility that they need to operate their business in the way they can make money. So, you've got a principal use, you can sell whatever the heck you want on 100% of your property, then you've got these accessory uses, which this helps. What I'm floored about with this amendment is, I actually think this amendment expands and gives the businesses what they need, and so I'm looking at it, not understanding why we're opposed to this, because I really see this as like extremely helpful for the businesses. I think it expands out. So, to the extent somebody can add to that, and maybe convince me I'm incorrect on this, I'd love to hear it, but that's the way I'm looking at it. If anybody at the table wants to jump in, I hope I'm understanding your intent correctly.
Thank you, Councilman Volkey. I'm definitely not going to dissuade you from your support. The, you're exactly right. I mean, I think everybody here agrees that our code, as existed before the introduction of this bill, has structural problems, and I think we're all sort of trying to come at how to address it in the best way. And I think this approach by the administration was intended, and is intended, to provide the maximum flexibility within reason.
Ms. Pickard.
Oh, oh, doesn't happen very often.
Yes.
But I agree with my colleague here, and I'm a yea on this amendment. I think it, I think it does what the businesses in the audience need it to do. Thank you.
And again, I'm not sure who was first, so.
Go ahead.
Ms. Fiedler.
Okay. So, I have a question in regards to four in the amendment. So, when we're talking about the accessory landscaping or tree-cutting operations, or accessory retail or wholesale uses, all of that, and then 45% of the area, right now as an accessory, landscaping and tree operations are 15%. This amendment changes that to allow up to 45% of accessory use. Am I reading that correctly, or am I wrong?
Or one acre, whichever is less.
Okay. So, I'm correct, in that it changes from 15% as an accessory use?
I'm going to turn to the better lawyers at the table. But yes, I think so.
Okay.
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Yes, that is correct, and as was said already, it lumps those two together. So, it lumps what was in the original bill as 30%, and what was in the existing code is 15% together, and it helps in enforcement, and so the inspectors don't have to determine which, what is here in association with your landscaping contractor use, and what's here in association with your accessory retail? And the piles of mulch or stone are a good example, because sometimes you might have those piles of mulch that you sell as part of your retail operation, and somebody comes and picks them up, and sometimes you may have them there just as part of your landscaping company, and you may just go and provide those in landscaping that you provide to people, that some businesses operate that way, and they don't even sell them as retail. So, this way, the inspectors don't have to make that determination as to how they're using those items, they just have to make the determination of whether 45% of the area is being used for storage of those items, regardless of how they're selling them and using them.
Madam Chair, follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, my concern with this is, and I certainly appreciate it, but this issue came to us not to allow expansion, or potential expansion, of the landscaping accessory use. And I, there are other businesses in my district that are current cases, where they are above and beyond that 15%, and the nearby neighbors said, "Listen, we moved in when it was 15% and we're okay with that, but they've expanded beyond that, and if we knew that this was going to turn into a contracting yard, we would have never moved here." So, that's why we were very careful not to open up that door to increased landscaping accessory use, because these businesses do exist within communities that were okay with the operations of the landscaping at the 15% size, but allowing it to go beyond that is problematic for existing communities.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer for Land Use. Again, without a site plan to verify the quantity on the site, it would only be a presumption that they are exceeding the 15%. But again, this is why I believe the amendment is going to work here, because it folds in what the audience has asked for. It eliminates the confusion that the enforcement office is dealing with, and it combines what was already in the proposed bill under one category. So, I think the amended language does what we're trying to achieve here, which is to help these small businesses thrive. Because without the evidence to show what that percentage is, it's pure speculation, and we have to deal with facts when we're measuring these percentages, which is why I believe the 45% will take us out of that danger zone of, oh, your 1.5%, you got to eliminate 0.5% of your merchandise. I just think that's a little dangerous to go there.
Ms. Fiedler, did you have a follow-up?
Yes. I would just, I would just ask my colleagues, I understand the concern, and I certainly do appreciate that this is a challenging area for our inspectors to go out and figure out who is in compliance or not. But, this amendment, like I said, could open up a box for other businesses in existing communities. So, I would ask my colleagues to reject this amendment, but I would like to work on a way to address the concerns of the department, and that would take further discussion.
Lori Rhodes, Deputy Chief Administrative Officer. I also want to point out another thing. These types of uses will not be in the interior of a residential neighborhood. That is the sole reason why the facility has to be located on an arterial or collector road. Those roads are generally at the periphery of a residential neighborhood, which is why I believe the amendment will cover what's needed to allow these businesses to flourish.
And I'll just add, Councilman Fiedler, I think the administration believes our approach is, provides the most flexibility to the businesses, but we already have adopted one amendment tonight, so the bill will be coming back. I think we all can pledge to work together, regardless of the outcome of this amendment, because I think we've all agree that it's a tough nut to crack.
Ms. Hare.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Two quick pieces on this. Going back to Councilman Volkey's comment on the definition, and then how accessory's been used in here, I actually think the way this amendment is drafted now, we have a definition of nurseries with landscaping and plant sales, but then in Title 18, the title doesn't match the definition. Instead, under this amendment, it would say nurseries with accessory landscaping and plant sales. So, now we have a definition that doesn't actually match the code section, and I think that's a problem. The second piece of this is, I actually think this amendment is much more restrictive on your land use, because of the fact that they've tied the 45% of the area is no longer of the lot, it's of the, it's 45% of the area used for the principal nursery operation. So, if we go back before to my example, let's say you have a 10-acre lot, and you've got a nursery operating on there, but your growing facilities are an acre of that. Half the lot's wooded, half of the lot's, you know, not really used, and you want to go ahead and do some of these landscaping services or things like that. You'd be limited to 45%. Your retail landscaping services and landscaping storage items would be limited to 45% of the one acre you're using for nursery operations. Under the bill initially drafted, we've got it tied to the lot size. So, actually, in that instance, you'd be able to, the way the bill is currently drafted, you'd actually be able to have a more flexibility on what you do with your property, and it's a much easier calculation, because you're going based off of lot size, as opposed to how much of the property is used... how much of the property is used for the principal operation. So I think we need, this amendment, I don't think addresses the flexibility concerns that the members of the community have come out to testify. The bill is coming back in two weeks, and I am perfectly, very willing to try and work and make sure that we're getting that flexibility in there, but I do think this is actually more restrictive, and there's a definitional problem to go along with it.
Does anyone know who was first? Mr. Volkey.
Yeah. If we adopt this tonight, we can come back in two weeks when we're going to get the bill again, because we're going to get it again, and if everybody's talking about doing another amendment already to fix this, we can just fix it then. So we can just change it to lot size then in two weeks. That's no issue. Number two, the definitional change is a technical amendment, not substantive, so even if we changed it, we could vote the same night on it, which doesn't delay this any further. And number three, there's a second definition which Ms. Rhodes had mentioned, which is 18-101, it's 18-110177, talking about landscaping and tree contracting. That's actually talking about businesses that are in the business of doing tree removal, pruning, landscaping, all of that. That's not this. This, when you're talking about what type of business it is, it's a nursery that's selling landscaping products. That's what we're talking about, and selling plants and other things. That's what we're covering, not these types of things that are other businesses operating in the same area. So, you know, I just, I look at it and it's like, I think we heard people say, let's do something that makes sense, let's have common sense about this. 1%, 15%, 30%, going out and measuring, that's not common sense. Let's just do 45%, and then at that point, we give the max flexibility, and if we think that we need to change it so that we clarify it, so that it's based on lot size and not on the percentage of actual property that's being used for the operation, I'm all about that amendment. I'll support that two weeks from now.
Then let's get that amendment right as opposed to passing something that's not right and.
Chair, point of order. Going to recognize the speaker.
Go ahead, Ms. Hare, you may respond.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. Let's get it right the first time and not pass something and come back and try and fix it.
Ms. Pickard?
Well, once again, I don't know what's happening tonight, there must be a full moon, but I'm agreeing with my colleague. He stole all of my comments, so.
Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When did the administration share this amendment with the sponsors of the bill?
So I was out last week, so I don't recall exactly when my legislative assistant sent it, but I would say that the council staff, we initially had this and the other amendment all in one, and we ran into some signal subject questions, so it took a day or two to pull it out. It was Thursday or Friday, probably.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to answer that question. It was Friday afternoon, actually. I think it was about 3:30 on Friday afternoon. Thank you, Ms. Corby.
Well, I think we are spending a heck of a lot of time on really what is a drafting policy question that could be resolved when we're not up here on the dais. I think this amendment isn't, doesn't address what the people have asked for. I think maybe some of the concept in here could work, but it needs to be worked through with the sponsors because otherwise you'd be hijacking the bill. I think that's not the purpose of the bill. I am more, much more concerned, as just a comment, that the one, the one nursery said that in their 19 years of operation that they had had 12 zoning enforcement actions or complaints against them, and right now I feel like we're sitting in the middle of what is otherwise a lawsuit that is outside this chambers. And I am more and more concerned that whatever we do may impact existing litigation. We haven't been advised about that, what that impact could be. And frankly, we are spending way too much time worrying about rocks, which are silent, gravel, which is silent, dirt that is silent, sand that is silent, mulch that is silent, when I have all kinds of emails that keep getting sent to me day after day with complaints about zoning enforcement in the northern part of the county, and with complaints about dirt bikes, and complaints about other off-road vehicles illegally operating on the roads. I'm pretty done with this concept. I think it should be way easier than what we're doing right here. I'm going to vote against this amendment because I think you guys should come back to the table and just craft a new one. Doesn't make sense. You already agreed to, you know, come back, so let's use our time more productively.
Thank you. I just want to jump in with one question, and hopefully we're close to wrapping this up, but I want to get some clarification because I had learned about this situation way back when, and if my recollection serves me correctly, the, one of the things that initiated at least one of those zoning enforcements was a complaint by a neighbor who was concerned about the noise from a landscaping business, not from landscaping materials. Is that, and I'm seeing nods in the audience. Okay. So I think that, you know, trying to keep that in mind and keep folks reined in, you know, it's tricky because on one hand, we don't want to be overly regulatory, but on the other hand, we do need some sensible regulation. And on the hand that doesn't even exist, OPZ is doing their best to interpret the letter of the law and, you know, is hearing arguments, you know, from folks that feel like they have legitimate complaints under the letter of the law that maybe hadn't been the previous interpretation. So, you know, I think it's a matter of coming, getting to the right place in terms of balance, and it seems like we're close, but I'm going to vote against it because I would, I think we can get a little bit closer. So with that, seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Hare.
Nay.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Trupuski.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Nay.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been defeated. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment clarifies that the change to the definition of nurseries with landscaping and plant sales and certain other conditions apply to conditional uses granted and in use as of April 7, 2014.
Ms. Hare, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jessica Hare, District 7. So this amendment's pretty self-explanatory. It's a grandfathering clause. A number of years ago, the acreage for certain nurseries was changed from two acres to five acres, but there were still a number of lawfully existing nurseries operating on two acres at the time. It came to my attention that when we're adjusting this bill now, we need to make sure to carry that grandfathering forward so that those nurseries that were grandfathered years ago remain grandfathered from an acreage standpoint. So it updates, it allows all of the new definitions and clarifications to carry forward on those nurseries, but still allows the ones that were less than five acres as of April 7, 2014 to be a lawful use on this. So with that, I'd ask for your support. It closely mirrors the grandfathering portion of the administration's prior amendment, so I think we agree on that.
Let's, I'm sorry, let's see. Mr. Barron, you may proceed if you have comments to share. Sorry, I'm a little tired here.
Sure, thanks, Madam Chair. I can confirm we're good.
Motion to adopt.
Hare, second. And I'll just say, I think I expressed this to the sponsors in some of our conversations, I am a strong believer that if a business is operating for a long time and then later neighbors come in, they know what they're moving next to. And we actually had this, a similar situation with your Waterman's bill way back, I don't even remember, that was, seems like it was in the before times. But, you know, when you move into a neighborhood and you're moving, I'll admit, I lived next to Navy Stadium. I wouldn't go over there and say, wow, these football games are kind of noisy, can you bring that down? No, I knew I was moving next to Navy Stadium, and I feel like people, when they're purchasing their homes, should, you know, kind of have a sense of who their neighbors are going to be and make wise decisions at that time, so 100%. All right, seeing no additional lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Trupuski.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been adopted. All right. Bill Number 57-22, as amended, will be heard on Tuesday, July 5, 2022. And thank you, everyone, for all your time listening, and I actually really just want to say I'm appreciative of the administration and my colleagues' very thoughtful and considerate debate and trying to, you know, actually be problem solvers for our residents and our business owners, so good job, team. I think we are, let's see. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 11-22.
Resolution Number 11-22. Resolution approving the determination of certain county-owned property located on the north side of Overly Drive in Severna Park, Maryland as surplus property.
This is an administration resolution. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Daniels from Central Services Real Estate is joining me, and Ms. Nederer from Office of Law. So this is another, one of these sort of longstanding issues. Resolution 11-22 approves the surplus determination for 0.05 acre, of an acre of county-owned property on the north side of Overly Drive in Severna Park. So as many of you, and I know Councilman Fiedler is aware of, there is a house being built on that property which is encroaching on the county right-of-way. This is the first step to surplus. It would have to come back, so we're, this resolution, for everybody watching, would declare it surplus. There would have to be a separate council action to dispose of the property. This, the reason the administration is bringing this forward is part of the agreement to fix the problems that are occurring with that build. The builder will be required as part of any deal we strike before the county would surplus this land to remove a portion of the house that comes right up to that right-of-way so that they're in compliance with all the other setback and all of that requirements for their building. So to remind you, this is sort of step one. There will have to be a separate vehicle that comes before this council to dispose of it, and that will be contingent on remedying the structure's location on the parcel. What we're doing here is during all of the review of the property, some questions came up around the title and what part the county was in county right-of-way, whatnot. What we're doing here, and Ms. Nederer can talk about this a little bit more, is we're in the process of remedying the problem with the house, but we also have to take care of this title issue. So those two issues, in the administration's view, are linked, and if we can't resolve the issue, we won't bring step two here, which would be the private disposition without making sure that the offending portion of the house is remedied. So with that, we ask for your support tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Oh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District 5. I appreciate that explanation. I've obviously gotten a lot of questions about this bill and what this does and what it does not do, so I'll ask two of them. First being, how was this only identified at this point in time and not prior? And then the second question is, if we do not pass this bill tonight, you said it in your statements, but I want to be clear, please confirm that if this bill does not pass this evening, it will be in a stop-work order in perpetuity.
So I'll defer to Ms. Nederer on question one, but on question two, the purpose of this is in part to resolve the title issue, but it's also all wrapped up in fixing the house.
Thank you.
Good evening. Christine Nederer with the Office of Law. So the title issue came about, it's my understanding that the house was constructed on the property, and then when the county got involved or learned of the encroachment, started working with the builder to resolve that issue. The property owner then brought it to the county's attention that they thought that they also had rights to the property. Obviously, they built the house, but they learned that there was a potential title issue because the records show that the county, we think that we have some rights in it. It was a residue partial that was created when the Early Heights Road Connector was created. So it wasn't, you know, property necessarily that the county has had an interest in or a need for it, obviously, and I set out in the legislative summary what happened, you know, so it was just never brought to our attention until this issue with the encroachment happened. And so we are trying to work with the builder to resolve the title issue, again, as it was explained, separate from resolving the encroachment, except that we are not going forward with disposing of the property until that issue is resolved. And it's my understanding that the building permits have been issued for them to do that work. We're just waiting for it all to come together.
All right. Seeing no additional questions from the council, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 11-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair, there was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. We did not have anyone sign up ahead of time to speak, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution Number 11-22 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 11-22.
Resolution Number 11-22. Resolution approving the determination of certain county-owned property located on the north side of Overly Drive in Severna Park, Maryland as surplus property.
Seeing no further lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 11-22. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Trupuski.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 11-22 has been adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 15-22.
Resolution Number 15-22. Resolution approving appointments to the Police Accountability Board.
This is an administration resolution. Mr. Barron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Blair Klausmeyer will join me at the table from the Office of Law. So Resolution 15-22 appoints the first, it points eight members to the inaugural Anarundel County Police Accountability Board. As you all are very well aware of, the General Assembly passed HB 670, which implements and requires counties to stand up police accountability boards by July 1 of this year. We all went through Bill 16-22. It was a 6-1 vote, a lot of work by every single member of the county council and a number of folks in the administration to bring that bill forward and implement the state requirements. As you will also recall, we're under a very tight timeline in order to stand up the Police Accountability Board. The county opened an application portal while the bill was in front of the council and left it open until after it had passed. In the end, we received 89 complete applications of Anarundel County residents who wished to serve on the Police Accountability Board. The county executive tasked his chief of staff, his chief administrative officer, the director of equity, diversity, and inclusion, our equal opportunity and human relations officer, members of our constituent service and community engagement team, and several other members of the administration to review every single one of the 89 applications in detail. detail and select a number of people. I believe we interviewed 14 individuals for the, the eight spots. That, that series of interviews with the applicants to, to bring forward the eight that are, are before you today represents a diverse set of skills and backgrounds that were outlined in 1622. The pool of applicants was, it was an incredible group of Anarundel County residents that, that volunteered their time. And the county executive and the administration want to thank every single person who applied. I can't stress enough how impressive the pool of applicants were. Narrowing it down to, to eight that were selected, let alone picking a chair for this was, was nearly an impossible feat, but one that we knew we had to, to do. The folks listed before you, and many of whom are in the room, were able to, were come, come down tonight, represent a wealth of knowledge from a diverse set of backgrounds, including business, education, faith, community advocacy, and, and ethics, and law enforcement. The resolution appoints the eight members and names Jeanette Ortiz, who extends her regret for not being able to make it. She was on a pre-planned trip out of state. So we're excited to seat these members and, and look forward to working with them to serve all county residents. And hopefully you will pass this resolution tonight. Happy to answer any questions you may have. One thing I do want to note, the council was provided with the resumes and applications for all eight. You should have been provided them when, or right in advance of the resolution being introduced.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Resolution Number 15-22. Madam Secretary, do we have any testimony received from members of the public?
No, Madam Chair. There was nothing received ahead of time.
Thank you. We did not have anyone sign up ahead of time, but if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, you may come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, you state your name and address for the record, and your remarks will be limited to two minutes. Mr. Wadi, you have the floor whenever you're ready.
Am I fighting with you? Okay. Good evening, and happy Juneteenth to everybody. Hope you all got to celebrate the Black Freedom Day. This testimony is on behalf of the NAACP. My name is Stephen Wadi. Live at 7968 Heatherman Court in Severn, Maryland. As the, this is down further in the, in our testimony. But as the Maryland Police Accountability Act makes abundantly clear civilian oversight of police behavior and the cessation of blind police favoritism and use of force situations governed now, NAACP made clear over and over again to the county executive and its staff that a PAB must have a citizen's interest, it must take precedent over police interests. That is what the MPAA is all about. Hence, recommending numerous voting members for the PAB with significant ties to law enforcement counters the new law. While the law permits law enforcement members on the PAB and the county tried to include them as ex officio members, the NAACP's opposition to this as inconsistent with the purpose of the MPAA was recognized by the county council, and the county's attempt to add law enforcement to the PAB ex officio was properly rejected. Seeking to place members to the PAB who have connections to law enforcement seems to be an insidious attempt by officials to keep police oversight in the hands of law enforcement, a monumental affront to the new law. And the NAACP's opposition to the people, to the bill is not opposition to the people that have been recommended, but rather to the process. The NAACP is 100% opposed to the, to this resolution and requests that the county council reject the, the resolution and redirect the county executive to immediately cooperate with the NAACP and other social justice organizations to provide recommendations in harmony with the Maryland Police Accountability Act. Thank you.
Excellent timing, Mr. Wadi.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no additional movement in the audience at this time, the public hearing on Resolution Number 11-22 is now closed. Any additional discussion from my colleagues?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Lacy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We, at about 5:30 this afternoon, we received a letter sent by Ms. Lynda Davis of District One on behalf of members of the Anarundel County Coalition for Police Accountability. It is somewhat lengthy. I'm going to just read an excerpt, and the letter will be made part of the public record. And I'm reading this because I will be voting against this resolution, also not at all having anything to do with the quality or caliber of the appointees or nominees, but as an objection to the process. This letter is entitled "Statement of No Confidence in the County's Creation of the Police Accountability Board." The members of the Anarundel County Coalition for Police Accountability who signed on to this letter are the ACLU of Maryland, Annapolis Pride, CAIR, C-A-I-R, Office in Maryland, CASA, CAST, Data Justice, March on Maryland, NAACP Anarundel County Central Branch, or Anarundel County Branch, excuse me, Our Revolution Maryland AA Co., People Builders Consulting, Showing Up for Racial Justice, Annapolis and Anarundel County, and South County is Kind. They object and to this resolution on three concerns, three grounds. First is that the application process for membership on the PAB began despite the final bill not being voted on. This would normally be a fine practice in order to expedite an application process in order to meet the July 1st deadline, performing the board. However, the final bill included prohibitions on potential applicants that were not included in the draft legislation that was submitted in January, and prohibitions that were not included in the state law. By beginning the applications during the debate process, it became evident that potential applicants were subject to categorical denial by the bill that was drafted by the county executive. This not only heaped an extra cruelty on the application process for those individuals, but also provided a potential chilling effect on those who may have desired to submit their application. Second, during the application process and debate over Bill 1622, the county executive's office and certain council members stated that the Maryland Police Training and Standards Commission would be issuing its own recommendations on membership requirements for local police accountability boards. Members of the administration offered testimony that the county executive's office had seen the training commission's draft regulations despite them not being public at the time. The regulations were drafted to be more stringent than the requirements suggested by the administration. However, the Maryland Police Accountability Act does not grant the training commission any authority to draft regulations on the membership of police accountability boards. The Maryland Coalition for Justice and Police Accountability issued a letter in early May stating that the lack of statutory authority and opposing the stringent requirements being proposed by the training commission. There is a question of whether the county executive's office and county council have utilized the draft regulations in its deliberations on the final membership qualifications and even during the selection process. The issue came to a head at the training commission on Monday, June 9th, when Attorney General Brian Frosh attended the virtual meeting and stated that the training commission had no authority to issue any mandatory regulations regarding the membership of PABs and that the responsibility had been squarely placed in the hands of local jurisdictions by the Maryland, by the MPAA. Third, upon review of the members selected for the PAB, it is clear that many have either current or former ties to law enforcement in their current or previous work status. The coalition has deep respect and high esteem for many of these proposed members. Their concerns relate to real conflicts of interest between their relationship with law enforcement and their paid positions and the role of a member of the Police Accountability Board. Any partnership with the police, including police and schools, will be perceived as a conflict by anyone seeking a fair review of their complaint against the police. And if staying in the police department's good graces is part of their paying job, this is a real conflict. Thank you.
Any other comments from my colleagues?
I'll just make a quick comment here that I do share some of the concerns that have been mentioned. However, we're at a point where we are, you know, I'm looking at the clock, even though I should be looking at the calendar. We're, we're just nine days away from July 1st, when this needs to be implemented. And this does not have to be a closed door. If there are concerns that we have about this bill, I certainly hope we can encourage the General Assembly to address some of them because I feel like a number of my colleagues were very, felt hemmed in because of the legislation, and actually our, the county attorneys advised as such that we were hemmed in because of the legislations drafting or as drafted by the General Assembly. So I'm going to support the resolution, again, with no questions about the individuals involved. We have, you know, excellent individuals, but at the same time, you know, I do share some of the concerns that, you know, we have been discussing over the process of the original bill. So with that, I just wanted to have that on the record. See, oh, Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Amanda Fiedler, District Five. I just, to the applicants and those who are named in this resolution, thank you for putting yourself forward. This is an incredible responsibility and one that this council deliberated extensively. Thank you doesn't seem like enough, but thank you.
All right. Seeing a no, excuse me, no additional lights. Madam Secretary, please, oh, we haven't read the title. Do we need to read it again?
I can, yeah, I didn't read it in a second time. I'm happy to do that.
Let's, let's do that. My apologies. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 15-22.
Resolution Number 15-22. Resolution approving appointments to the Police Accountability Board.
All right. And once again, seeing no further lights, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 15-22.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Hare.
Aye.
Ms. Lacy.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Trupuski.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Resolution Number 15-22 is adopted.
Thank you. Is there any other business to be brought before the county council at this time? Seeing no lights, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Allison Pickard. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. The county council is adjourned until July 5th, 2022, when we will meet here in the chambers for our next Legislative Council meeting. This will be another Tuesday evening meeting. I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable Fourth of July and a safe trip home.